Council back to order. Amy, could you lead us in the pledge?
I'd like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone. Under our special presentations section of the agenda, I'm very saddened to do this first one, Dana, the retirement of Jeff Taylor.
Yes, Jeff Tyler, our chief building official, has announced his retirement. He's here this evening, and I think we've got something to recognize him with, and we certainly goes without saying how much we appreciate Jeff's service.
There he is.
He's hiding back there. There's just so, you know, too, there will be a public reception for Jeff this, is it Thursday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, I'm sorry. 3:30 to 6:00 at the rec center. So certainly the public is invited to come out for that, and appreciate Jeff's service.
Yeah, and Jeff, every time I've had any interaction with you, or even I've heard of anyone that has had interaction with you, it is always just glowing reports of the quality of you as an individual, and the staff that you've hired, and how your department runs, and the things that you do. And it can be a very, very tricky job, and you have done such a wonderful job for this community, and for, as a member of the staff, we are very, very sorry to see you go, but wish you the best in your retirement. I do have a proclamation here to read to you. Jeffrey Tyler will retire from his position as Director of Building Services and Chief Building Official at the City of Dublin on June 30th, 2017, after more than 11 years of service with the city. And as Chief Building Official, Jeff has led the City of Dublin's Building Department, working with the State of Ohio Building Officials, Washington Township's Fire Marshal, Engineering Officials, Contractors, and Business Owners. And whereas under Jeff's leadership, the City of Dublin Building Department was recognized in 2014 with the State Building Standards of Innovation Award for demonstrating exemplary customer service, dedication to public service, and furthering the mission and goals of the Ohio Board of Building Standards. And whereas Jeff is an AIA certified architect, and has worked for the cities of Dayton and Kettering, as well as the Ohio Department of Commerce as the Assistant Superintendent, Chief Building Official. And whereas Jeff has served on the Boards of Directors of the Central Ohio Code Officials Association, and is recognized across the state as an industry expert. And whereas Jeff has further fulfilled his civic duties as a Staff Sergeant in the United States Air Force Reserves from 1986 and to 1992, as a munitions systems specialist. And whereas the City of Dublin has been very fortunate to have Jeff working tirelessly to help create and carry out the processes and procedures critical to promoting building safety, efficiency, and excellence in our community. Now therefore, I Gregory S. Peterson, Mayor of the City of Dublin, Ohio, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby congratulate Jeff on his retirement from the City of Dublin, and wish him and his family all the best in the future. Thank you very much. Come on, you're gonna have to, Jeff.
Yes, I wanted to say a couple of words, and I said, "Not really," but I guess I will. So first of all, who's that guy that you were talking about? But thank you very much. And honestly, I can't, I can't stand here and accept the recognition without thanking you all, and City Management, Dana McDaniel. Frankly, when I came here 11 years ago, wasn't quite sure what to expect, but I knew that Dublin had a high standard of quality, high standards of building standards, if you will. And so I knew it would be a, it would be a task for me. But as City Council, you've always provided, and City Management, sorry, you've always provided the resources. You've always showed your care for what we do. You've always backed us in what we've done. Indicative of that was during the downturn, while other building departments were laying off staff, I didn't have to lay off a staff member. And that's because you supported us, and I definitely thank you for that. Along with those thank yous, Donna Goss, who has come in and really been a good mentor and a good boss, if you will, and has supported us in our efforts to really try to do the right thing as a building department. So I thank you as well. Frankly, I thank my staff. They are, without a doubt, the best building department in central Ohio, the best building department in the state of Ohio, and as far as I'm concerned, the best building department in the United States. They're dedicated, they do their jobs extremely well, they make me look good so I can do this type of stuff. And they're not leaving, so that's the good thing. They will remain, and you'll continue to have a quality staff. I would also like to thank, I don't know if they're here, the partnership with Washington Township. I had a meeting with the Director of Commerce, some of you know who that is, and as part of that meeting, we were discussing just kind of how building departments function, and how building and fire departments interact. And I was able to tell her, "Come to Dublin," because frankly, that is how it's supposed to work. Across the state, we are unique. As some of you may know, I was gonna call you Mayor Keenan, I'm sorry. Mike, you may, you may know that that's a difficult proposition in a lot of places. Building and fire don't work together. Building and fire compete for territory, if you will. I have yet to experience that in my tenure here, and that is a reflection of those that were, actually came in before me, both on the building side, and on the fireside, and with Washington Township Administration. So we'd like to thank them as well. So 11 years, it's been a great ride. You all have been great to work with, and great to work for. The whole idea of excellence is a lifestyle here, and I appreciate that, and I will take that with me. We're kind of retiring, but we're kind of moving on to a different location. And with that, I will take the things that I've learned here, and hopefully apply those in that location. So, thank you.
Jeff, I have a very close friend, and he's a fairly significant subcontractor to a lot of the work that's done in and around here. And he told me the other day, I didn't even know that he knew you were interacting with your department, but he said that we're really gonna miss him. And that's really high praise coming from somebody in the construction side, because they normally don't get along too well. But they said, you know, they work hard to work together, to work out the issues, as there are always issues when you're building or developing. And I can't think of any higher praise coming from that community. So, thank you.
Absolutely, great. Good luck to you, Jeff. Thank you for all your efforts. AEP. Megan?
Good evening, members of council. In your packet for the May 22nd City Council meeting, we had included an informational memo sharing that AEP had notified staff of the need for electrical systems upgrades in Dublin. Staff has had a series of meetings with AEP Transmission and AEP Ohio Representatives to get an understanding of what is driving the need for the system upgrades, as well as the timeline, and then discuss and review options to increase reliability and capacity in Dublin. AEP is prepared, prepared to present some information about their project this evening, and I would like to introduce Ron Howard. He's AEP Transmission's Line Sighting Specialist, who will discuss the need, review the options they considered, and outline next steps. There's also some information that's been placed at your seats relevant to the project this evening. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ron.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you. I'd like to introduce our team here, if I could, real quickly. As Megan said, I'm Ron Howard. I'm a Transmission Line Sighting Specialist. With me, I have the Project Manager for AEP Transmission, Mike Fackler. We have Brett Schmidt, who is our Outreach Specialist, who, any questions will be directed toward him first. And then with us also is Renee Schumay. She's part of AEP Ohio. I do want to thank you for allowing us to be here tonight, and also Dana, Megan, and Donna for all the work they've done, working with us to understand the city's needs, and how we can best work with you. Basically, I want to start by talking, when this project came up, when we determined what the need was, we tried to determine who were the primary stakeholders that we would turn to. Two came to the forefront, and that was the City of Dublin and AEP Ohio. And if I could explain the difference, we are AEP Transmission. I like to explain that as, we are the interstate system of the electric grid. We go between major cities. AEP Distribution is your side streets, and that's who Renee represents, and she's the one that takes it from those major interchanges into the communities. So as we turned to both of these key stakeholders, the first thing that, that came up when we talked with AEP Ohio was the ability to try to get a third source into the City of Dublin for the Dublin Road Station. What that means is that currently there are two sources into Dublin Road, and if we had to work on one of them, then the city would be left with a single source. So if something ever happened to that line, we would be putting you guys not in the greatest of situations. We would, construction would be much more difficult. So both the city and AEP Ohio thought that that would be one of our drivers, as we determined what the need, and how to move forward with this project. And then the second part is, by having that, we produce, we bring you better reliability into your system, because then not only would you have two sources, but you'd have a third strong source. So as the city develops and grows, we would be able to support you better. So to turn into the need, let's stay with that one for a second. Basically, as we talked about, we've been working closely with Donna, and in that, we identified that not only are there existing customers whose need is growing currently, but there's potential for future development here in what you call the, the WID, I'm sorry, the-
West Innovation District.
Innovation District. I was forgetting the innovation part, thank you. So as we turn to that, I'll let Mike talk about then where we step into the different portions of where we went after we identified the need.
So when we kicked off this project late in 2016, we were looking at rebuilding the Dublin-Sawmill line, which is the circuit between Sawmill and Dublin, on the north down to the south, Dublin Station.
So our Sawmill Station is here, where the mouse is, coming down here to the Dublin Road, which is just across from your development center.
And then we also evaluated from Brookside over to Dublin, and then Dublin over to Amlin. So that's kind of just a high-level view of the project, and where we were looking to develop this project. So Dublin-Sawmill was built in the 1970s, approximately six miles long. The major issue is it's about 92% residential, so a lot of impacts to residents along the route there, about four miles worth of residents. And it would meet the project needs. But again, like Ron had mentioned, the challenges was a 24 to 48-hour restoration, so if we would take that line out to rebuild it, you know, and if the Davidson-Dublin line went out of service, there's nothing feeding Dublin Station. So that was a huge risk that we considered, looking at this project, and, you know, decided it probably wasn't the best plan for the City of Dublin. And so the other site to the west, or I'm sorry, to the east, was Dublin-Brookside, approximately two and a half miles. It would meet our needs, but it was going through old Dublin, bridge, highways, river crossings. So just several issues that we saw there. The third option was Dublin-Amlin, approximately three miles, met our needs. And then if we installed this double-circuit line from Amlin to Dublin to the west, we could remove the six miles of transmission line from Sawmill to Dublin. So we would essentially remove the six miles that's in people's backyards, just the transmission portion. Some of the challenges was the Shire Rings Road, there's some historical places there. And then there's numerous utility usements, but for the most part, it does stay away from the residential areas.
Then working with the city on, you know, last year in November, you had the, approved the Shire Rings Corridor Study. And ironically enough, you didn't have any transmission poles on that study, so that's when we started working closely with the city to work through that. As we worked, behind the PowerPoint presentation, there's 11 by 17 that shows this up close, more closely for you all. And basically, what we did is, we looked at different, we started at the Dublin Road Station, which is there on the far right of your screen, or on your packet, and we tried to determine ways how to get from there up to Amlin. The number-one driver that we focused on was avoiding residential impacts as we were working with the city. So what we were looking at is, as we came out of our Dublin Road Station, we would cross over the street, and we would overbuild the existing distribution that's currently there. When you get to right about the point where the mouse is on the screen, we have two different options there, where we could come south along Shire Rings and follow the distribution, or we could stay north and go across, and then, we decided to go north there. One, that is, properties there are owned by the city, and it also then allows us to stay away from the residential that is further to the west there, avoiding Ballantry, as well as avoiding the two areas where there are historic properties. There is one right there on the north side of the road, and then the other is the barn that is, I believe, used by the golf course. Nope, just down to the left a little bit, right there, the two together. Oh, over to the right, right there, to the right of there, those two. Those are the other two historic structures that are on the National Register of Historic Places. So as we worked with Donna and the team, we identified the development plans through this area, and we came up with several different options. The one highlighted there in yellow is, when we go to a public meeting, is the one that we will be bringing forth as our preferred. You can go to the next slide, if you want, for a second. So one of the things that we did, you know, we're very aware of the city's desire for, to not to have overhead transmission lines in the city. So we are aware of that, but based upon our discussions and everything, for us to build this underground would be more than double the cost of constructing the double-circuit overhead. So that's when we worked with the city to try to find ways to minimize impacts to residences. And by building the one that we're showing as preferred, we would stay away from the communities of Ballantry, and we'd be also able to remove the transmission line that runs from Dublin-Sawmill through the residential neighborhoods there. That would not be able to be removed until we constructed the other project first. You can go to the next slide. So what are our next steps? Basically, in the packet that we supplied you with, the letter there is what we'll be sending out, I believe they were mailed today.
They were put in the mail today.
And so your residents will start seeing these letters in their mail, to talk about that we'll have an open house on July 11. In there also is, there is a postcard, that is the next one that will come out a week to two, right before, as a reminder of the public meeting. Tonight at 8 o'clock, there'll be a-
News release.
News release, that's included in your packet. And then there's a copy of what our informational handout will be for the public meeting on July 11th as well. So in that, we'll be taking comments from the public. Everyone from pretty much the Dublin Road Station, all the way along Shire Rings, including Ballantry, and then up through the OU District, will be the ones receiving the mailings to come to our public meeting. And then what we'll propose me to do is come back on the 31st to the next council meeting to give you an update on how the public involvement went, and to go over any questions that you have following this. Basically, at this point in the stage, we're just looking to, for a corridor that we can build in. There still will be options that we're working with the city on relative to, to structure types, to the spacing of the transmission lines, a lot of aesthetics that we're able to work through with, that will be presented at that public meeting. And then, as you ask questions, we'll be able to bring you that information. And then after that, after the public meeting, informational meeting July 11, we'll begin doing fieldwork, ecological and cultural resources. We'll summarize that information up, and submit something to the Ohio Power Sighting Board for their review and approval. And that's kind of the process from there. Our contact person, she's not here with us tonight, but she is a Dublin citizen, Erin Miller. She works with Brett, and this is her project, but she couldn't be with us tonight. And from that, I'll open the floor to questions, if you have any.
Ron, can I ask you a quick question? You, in the letter it mentions, and I think you had mentioned that, that you would be able to remove six miles of transmission wire. That's not all the wires that are on those poles, right? So there will still be poles, and there'll still be wires, there'll just be fewer of them.
That is correct. Basically, we should have brought a picture of that. I apologize for not doing that. Like I said, transmission will be the very top voltages, just to the west of the roundabout out here at Post Road, and, I can't, just south of where we are currently.
Emerald Parkway.
Just beyond Emerald Parkway, did you make the first right?
If you look at the back of your fact sheet, there is a proposed structure that we have as a part of this project, that has essentially six wires on the top, that are kind of all on the same side, and then there's two, two crossarms that are underneath that. The transmission portion are essentially the top six wires. The below portion of that is the distribution. So that's the service that's providing directly to your home. So in that essence, where we would move six wires, it would be the top three wires would be removed. Anything below that would remain.
I think that's an important thing to get out, because expectations are everything. And if you tell people the wires are coming out, they're thinking, wow, the poles are coming down, the wiring, this is the greatest thing I've ever seen. And then when you guys say, "Well, no, there's, half of them are coming down," then all of a sudden, they're disappointed, whether otherwise would have been more realistic in their expectation.
It's all about communication, that's for sure.
It's just framing that expectation. When you say it's, that, remove about six miles of transmission wires from a line that connects a substation near Sawmill Road.
And then, so we would remove the top wires, and then we'd top the poles, because they're wooden, and we'd top them about three feet above the distribution.
So they'll be down a little bit, but not totally.
But not gone.
Our residents are gonna think they're all coming down, though. I know that that's gonna happen. I agree with you, Greg.
Were any of you familiar with the improvements we did along Wilcox Road when we undergrounded the Dublin-Davidson line that runs along the freeway? That portion is kind of, what Wilcox looks like now is what it'll look like in the future. But previously, it was the, had the transmission line above that.
Can staff get us some pictures of that for next meeting, or whatever?
Yes, we can do that.
Yeah, we'd like to maybe get a little more visual, if we could. You have preferred route here laid out. Is, and you may have stated this earlier, but is that AEP's preferred route? Is it our staff's preferred route, or is it a collaboration?
It is AEP's preferred route.
Did staff have any involvement in this?
I would, yes. It was definitely a collaboration as well, as we, and I want to thank AEP for being proactive in communicating with us on this, and giving us a chance to, at staff level, to at least take a look at this, and try to air out some possibilities. When you look at the trade-off of, I think it's 200, about 225 homes, I think, where that transmission goes north, and in the backyards, the opportunity to reduce that visual to those folks, and then to put a additional transmission on an existing line that's not particularly affecting residential area, and then do some open field running ahead of development, and to also provide increased in quality, reliable power, not only to that area, but really to the city as a whole, is a pretty, we viewed as a pretty good trade-off. We certainly analyzed all the budgets involved in this, too. We also looked at trade-offs for burial, and in that this is a double-circuitry line. It's unlike what we did, and I was personally involved in the Wilcox Road ones, I remember that one very well. We were able to do trade-off for land acquisition and some other things in the project, went and got some land acquisition donated from various companies to try to get that underground. That was very helpful in getting that budget lowered significantly. And the city did wind up putting some pretty significant dollars into that.
I remember.
When we start talking double-circuitry, though, that number gets a lot higher than what we dealt with before, because that's just a different animal than what we, than what we dealt with last time.
Is there anything we'd want to consider, or can you even do that? A portion of that route, bearing, if it is, if it's near residential area?
Well, we're, what we're doing is averting the residential area by going north, and staying in what is really future commercial development, pushing up towards the highway. We even had some, some, although minimal discussion with Dublin Methodist Hospital, you know, about it potentially coming up closer to the highway across from them. They didn't seem to have any concern about that. So my point with all this is just trying to do some early vetting in partnership and collaboration with AEP, doing some brainstorming. I think that this next hearing process will be very beneficial to the residents and to AEP, as they can get into more detail and glean some input back from folks in the area relative to the type of construction and so forth. So there's other things to still talk about, the types of poles they might use, and, you know, what, what might be of a better visual for them or not, or not for them, but for the public as a whole. So there's still a lot to go through. And in their sighting board process, they certainly have certain regulatory requirements that they, I don't want to speak for them, but through experience, know that they have to follow relative to that. So we appreciate the opportunity to weigh in this early as they start to go through this process.
Can you gather some information off our GIS along this route, I say, 3 to 6A to 6B to 5 to 8, 9, 11, the yellow line that we see on this piece right here? Can you GIS the ownership of the properties impacted for me?
We can do that.
So I know who we're gonna hear from?
We can do that. We can also do some of the visuals, not only of the existing, like on Wilcox, that treatment, but what's north of that, going, going up to the Dublin Station, and then, or the Sawmill Station, and potentially, I would hope that they would do some mock-ups on what it is they would propose to do, based on the input that they get going west, if that's, you know, preferred routes.
Dana, along with that information that Mike is asking for, it talks about the AEP Ohio build new steel single-pole structures that would be 90 feet tall. The structures would be placed in the center of an approximate 100-foot right-of-way corridor. What limitations will there be on that 100 feet moving forward? Some of this is, you know, vacant land, and certainly that's, will compromise the value of it, because I'm assuming that a portion of that land will become unusable for some purposes. And so I'd like to see some information on what that's gonna do, if it's gonna primarily run through our property.
Right.
How that might affect us moving forward.
Right. And we can certainly give you that, and you'll probably note that we really tried to hug boundary lines and so forth along through there. So we'll get you that information. The one thing that I do want to make sure we point out is that, you know, the City of Dublin can certainly have some influence. But as, and just to remind everyone, including the public, you know, American Electric Power is its own entity, its own utility. They certainly have a lot of rights relative to this. I don't want to go deep on anything legal, but they, they do have their abilities to do certain things. So, you know, what we want to do is be as collaborative and as much of a partner in this as possible, and, you know, help them weave through the process here. So not trying to distance ourselves too much from that, other than to say they, they are one entity or another, but we'll try to work with them. And the extent that, we don't really have decision authority, but we can certainly give our input, so.
I'm curious about one thing. I think I'm addressing this to the AEP folks. When you're looking at the line where you go from .9 to .8 on your preferred route, and then you go up 33, and then you're, between 5 and 8, you cross this black line that says 4 and 7. And I'm curious why you wouldn't choose to take that yellow line up to 4, and then across, rather than across to 5 and down, and kind of cattywampus, and then up through Dari Fields. If, if you could, that looks like a lot of extra zigs and zags, you know, through more property, where you're kind of on roadways and boundary lines here.
Yeah. It was through a collaborative effort with city planning that we tried to identify the needs with the city of those specific property owners through there. And it was felt that, that based upon impacts relative to, toward Nestle and some others, that it might be beneficial for us to head toward the south. But, but any of these options, we could start exploring further after the public involvement portion. But at this point, this is, was deemed a better option.
Dana, number eight there on the grid. So we're gonna have poles fronting the 33? I mean, I thought that was one of the prime pieces of ground that was left, that had freeway visibility. Why would we want to have towers up there? It looks to me like you'd run the thing straight down Shire Rings Road and be done with it.
Well, I'd rather, from our view, we would rather have them up there than along the residential.
But you couldn't put another Cardinal Health out there, or another big project with those poles out in front of the, between the building area and the roadway, I wouldn't think. I mean, I wouldn't find it too attractive if I were building a big commercial building there. I don't, I don't get that, I don't get that route.
Well, like I said, I think our view was, how do we avoid the, more so the impact on existing residential neighborhoods than on future neighborhoods. I, I don't think when you're going along the highway front, certainly we, we don't want to clutter that up. However, given the trade-off, that's- clutter that up, however, given the trade-off, that's, and again, just because we were looking at that doesn't mean that's the way it's got to be, but that's why we were more focused on that, rather than down along the existing residential neighborhoods.
Is it possible to bury only a portion of the project?
I'm sorry?
Is it possible to bury a portion of the project?
It's always possible if you have money.
Yeah, it's all a matter of cost.
So actually, AEP, we can't bury a portion of a circuit and have a portion above ground. It creates a protection and control nightmare, so if we did have a fault, we wouldn't really know where it's located. So our preference is, I mean, would we have to do all, or all underground, or all overhead?
So I wonder how much more cost it is to zigzag around than a straight line?
The cost does vary, but it's trying to be a good partner.
I understand.
So, and then, to let you know, too, about where we are in the process, we did work with the city and AEP Ohio, however, this is just a line on a piece of paper at this point. It's really kicking off with today's meeting and going through the public meeting that we really are developing and finalizing things, so at this point, all comments are very important to us, so.
I just want to clarify, maybe it's my misunderstanding, Mr. Howard, I heard you make repeated references to Dublin Road, and did you mean to say the Dublin Station on Emerald Parkway?
It's Dublin Station, that's if I missed.
Okay, I kept trying to think of where there was a station on Dublin Road.
No, I apologize, I'm at Dublin Station, I apologize.
You were, you were really testing me there.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I would just suggest maybe to planning staff that they make Traditions of America aware of this proposed route just south of Dari, and, you know, which would border, you know, the parcel that, just to make them aware.
Any other questions from council? Okay, thank you very much, we really appreciate you coming in, all the effort you're putting into that important project, so thank you. If you could just give us your name and address, please.
Molly Newberry, 9468 Jerome Road, Dublin, Ohio.
Welcome.
And the reason why I came here for council is, I don't want to make it too long, back in October, we had the city manager come out to the 55 Club at St. Bridge of Cudar and show us a really neat video of Dublin, and the future of Dublin, and the building and everything like that, and also talked about the canoeing down the Sider River, which I was really interested in, because I'm a water safety instructor. So anyway, I saw that, I, with the Columbus, Columbus Ski Club, and we do more than just skiing, and one of the things I wanted to do was have a group of us go down the Sider River. Well, every place I wanted to, I couldn't get, I was trying to get rental, canoe rental, all in TNG paddle, under the Dublin Arms Council, every year, go down the Sider River, and they do a canoe ride down there, and then they go to the, one of the concerts at Sider Park. I thought that was pretty cool. So she said, if you wanted to join us, you can, I said, I'd be glad to. Well, I finally found a place I could have rental, that's available, was the Boy Scouts. So I could use rental with the Boy Scouts. I said, that's cool, and, but they said you should have the Boy Scouts, you know, join you guys going down the river. I said, okay, so, went to my parish, the St. Bridge, and I said, I need some Boy Scouts to go down the river. Well, they got to do a safety course. I said, fine, I have no problem with that. So I even got an instructor to do that with the Boy Scouts, Dr. Moore, she said, I'd be glad to do it, give me a weekend, I'll come down, I'll do it. So then I tried to call Columbus Parks Recreation, find out if there's a pond and we could do, do the class, you know, at least one day of class, and they said, no, you can't. I go, why? Well, there's not permit to do swimming in the ponds, and if you're going to be in a canoe with a, canoe in the pond, you're going to swim. So you cannot use, I said, you guys got 40 ponds in Dublin, and I can't use one of them? Don't you have a permit? They go, no, we have nothing, nobody's allowed to be in the ponds. Well, I didn't believe them. I think as a kid at Parks and Recreation, didn't know what he's talking about. So I called the, I called Washington Township, the fire department, and they, oh, we'll give you the chief, Connor, Chief Connor, I'm not sure what his last name was, and he goes, yes ma'am, we were at Sider View, we were in the pond there, and they kicked us out, saying we couldn't have our training session in the pond. I said, you've got to be kidding me. He goes, no ma'am. So, you know, and then I called Metro Parks in Glacier, and they said, well, wetlands dry up, so we can't have any teaching classes in the water, because in the summertime, the water dries up. So I'm thinking, well, we got 40 ponds in Dublin, and we have all these people going down Sider River in the canoes and kayaks, and there's no training in Dublin. You have to go someplace else. What I did find out is, in Sharon Woods, in June, they had 900 people going through classes in their pond at Sharon Woods, Metro Park, and it's 11 acres. And I said, wow. So what I'm asking, if possible, if there's some Dublin Parks and Recreation, and the city, and the Boy Scouts, and the Girl Scouts, and whatever's out there for safety, if there's a way we could have permit, that we use one of the ponds, be able to have safety classes, and not going to swim, because you've got swimming pools to swim, but really to give the respect of people, of the water, you know, the river, if you're going to go down it, it gives the opportunity to let them learn how to be safe. That's one of the questions, you know, I'm asking. And the other thing is, if we're having all these people going down the Sider River, which they are, I mean, lots and lots and lots of people, I think a lot more than you even imagine, and if there's any way we could put like poles, flag poles along the river when the weather is bad, like they do with the oceans and stuff like that, if there's any way we could put some kind of flags along the river when it's not permitted to go down the river, when it's bad weather going to be coming, you just don't know. It's just a question, if it was something that could be looked at.
And they are very good questions. I imagine, as far as the ponds are concerned, it's probably a liability issue, that if...
Well, a lot of the scouts have already insurance on them already for having a class and stuff like that, already checked into that. I called the downtown Lazarus, well downtown, actually the, well, the council down there, and they told me their, each Boy Scouts has their own insurance.
Right, I guess what the liability I'm talking about is the city's liability.
Right.
Own the pond, and even if there was a Boy Scout that was insured, if something tragically happened in that pond.
Right.
Even the insurance company for the Boy Scout would come to the city and say, hey, this was on your property, and you encouraged them to climb into this pond. So I don't know the answer to your question.
Right, but I'm just saying, if there's some way we could write up a permit of rules and regulations of the permit, if they use it, to be able to have the instruction, if something like that could be done, something to look into.
We'll look into it.
Okay.
I think it might be appropriate, too, to perhaps that be an offering, if we're going to open up this park along the riverfront of our rec center offering training. We do CPR training, we do babysitting training, we do a number of training classes that kids can take, or that anybody can take. I think that would be something that might be suitable to add to that list. Additionally, I was down on the river Saturday, and, you know, we had a lot of rain on Friday, and there were people in kayaks on the river, right through the middle of town on Saturday, and, you know, that certainly would have been a precarious situation for folks, so I would support us, if we're going to encourage engagement of the river, we should encourage safe engagement of the river at the same time.
We have got your contact information, we will look into it, and we will be in touch.
And, yeah, I know I have to get the EPA on this, but the other thing I'm trying to do is get docs along the river to make it safer for the boaters.
We appreciate your efforts and your thoughts and your, the issues you've raised, and we will look into it, and we'll get back to you.
Yeah, a lot of rain type. Thank you so much to hear me, I appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you for coming in, Molly. Moving on to the consent agenda, there are, one, two, three, four, five items on the consent agenda, would any council member like to remove any one of those five items? Hearing no requests, I will make a motion to approve the five items listed on the consent agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Ann?
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc Leiter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Sam Ross Grooms?
Yes.
Second reading, ordinance 29-17, Ann.
Creating a tax increment financing incentive district, declaring improvements to parcels within the incentive district to be a public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, requiring owners of those parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of those service payments specifying public infrastructure improvements that benefit or serve parcels in the incentive district, authorizing compensation payments to the Dublin City School District, Toll's Career and Technical Center, this is the Riviera Incentive District.
Thank you, Ann. Angel?
Good evening, members of council. On May 8th, city council held a public hearing regarding the establishment of the Riviera Incentive District, which is also known as a residential TIF. That same evening, council had first reading of the proposed ordinance establishing this incentive district. As a reminder, we are proposing a TIF which would exempt 25% of the improvements for up to 10 years. The service payments received within this TIF area would be used solely to fund the Highland Crowe Connector, which at this time is estimated to cost $2.4 million. This level of exemption is within the city's statutory ability, which provides the ability to exempt up to 75% for up to 10 years without negotiating with the school districts. We are proposing that the incentive district be established as non-school, meaning Dublin City Schools and Toll's would be made whole. There are no changes since the first reading, and we are requesting your approval this evening.
Thank you, Angel. Any questions from council? Any discussion? Ann?
Ms. Aludo?
Hang on a second, Chris, did you have something?
I'm sorry. I just, I think it warrants a bit of a conversation for residential TIFs, and I know we've had a lot of conversation about the appropriateness of using TIFs in residential area. Now, what I appreciate about this TIF is that it's a 25%, and I think that that is a significant deviation from doing a blanket residential TIF. And I appreciate the, the work that this does for the township, that, you know, it's not going to be as burdensome on them as some of the straight TIFs or the full value TIFs. So I just want to point out that, that it is significant that it is a 25% TIF, and I think it's also significant that this connector road is primarily going to be, serve the same residential area that, that the TIF is being gleaned from. So I just wanted to thank staff for, you know, trying to pare that down to 10 years and to a 25%, because I think that is a step in the right direction for us as we talk about residential TIFs.
I tend to agree completely, I think 25% is a really reasonable threshold. Just curious, I know that we provided notice to Washington Township, did they respond? Do they have any thoughts?
No. There has been some dialogue back and forth, not particularly, actually, Trustee King may have requested the previous minutes, if I recall correctly, where this, where this development agreement was initially discussed back a few years ago. We provided everything that she's requested pertaining to TIFs.
Thank you.
I think it's fair to say we're not going to see a lot of residential TIFs, we've all talked about this, we're really, this was a unique situation, and I agree with you, but I don't think we're going to see a lot of this going forward.
Yeah, this issue was intensely discussed, like you said, two years ago, and brought to a head, and I agree with what Mike said, this is not something we're going to do.
Yeah, I definitely hope not.
Okay, thank you, Ann.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc Leiter?
Yes.
Ms. Sam Ross Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ordinance 33-17, Ann.
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documents to acquire a 0.009 acre, more or less, a fee simple right-of-way, 0.005 acre, more or less, temporary easement from the Indian Run United Methodist Church of Dublin, located at the intersection of Avery Road and Brand Road, for the public purpose of constructing roadway improvements.
Thanks, Ann. Anna?
Thank you, good evening, members of council. As, as the clerk stated in the title, this is about a construction project around about at Avery Road and Brand Road. We have been in conversations with the Indian Run United Methodist Church of Dublin, who is the grantor, and the city and the grantor in this case have come to mutually agreeable terms for the acquisition of the necessary property interest, both for the temporary and the fee simple right-of-way, for the sum of $17,225. Staff recommends approval.
Questions from council? Any discussion? Ann?
Ms. Sam Ross Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc Leiter?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Ordinance 37-17.
Vacating 0.418 acres, more or less, a public right-of-way, the city of Dublin, county of Franklin, state of Ohio.
Dana?
Thank you. So this one has to do with a previously entered into an agreement between the city and the Stonehenge Company back in 2008, and the agreement stated that the city intended to vacate certain property, of which this considers a .42 acre portion of the originally existing Tuswell Drive, and that was, that was as a result of the Avery Road Tuswell Drive Roundabout Project. The agreement further stated that the city would convey vacation area to Stonehenge. That was contingent upon a water line being completed in the immediate area, and then that transfer was to happen after that. Water line's done, in time to transfer the property that was originally agreed to in the agreement. So that's what this is about, and staff recommends approval of ordinance 37-17.
Thanks, Dana. Questions from council?
I just wanted to make a comment relative to this property, to the immediate north and west of the roundabout. It was rezoned, or the suggestion of the planning commission is that the city rezoned this property to a daycare, it's a little bit, there's always been going to be a daycare on that site, potentially, I think Bang Daycare, there are a handful of uses that were approved. The daycare is a little bit larger than what was in the original zoning text, so they had to come back and get a rezoning, and it's a very plain vanilla daycare center that will be situated in Hilliard City Schools.
Thank you, Amy. Any other comment or question or discussion? Ann?
Mr. Leclerc Leiter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Sam Ross Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Ordinance 38-17, Ann.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a real estate transfer agreement and an infrastructure agreement wherein the city deeds 3.69 acres, more or less, of real estate to Crawford Hoyon Development Partners LLC in exchange for the construction of the extension of Bridge Park Avenue from Dale Drive to Village Parkway, and authorizing the execution of various related agreements and documents.
Do you want to read the next one as well, Terry, and do them together? Ann, could you read ordinance 39?
39, vacating 0.30 acres, more or less, of a portion of a public street located east of Dale Drive, south of State Route 161, and 0.39 acres, more or less, of a portion of a public street located north of Tuller Ridge Drive and of New Dale Drive in the city of Dublin, county of Franklin, state of Ohio.
Terry?
I believe we had a fairly in-depth discussion on these two ordinances at your last meeting. There were two follow-up questions that were requested at that meeting, one of which was a request that we would verify the valuation on one of the parcels, I believe identified as Parcel B, to determine the appropriateness of the assumptions we made in that regard. You'll find in your report there, a letter appraisal opinion from the Robert Wyler Company, finding that the valuation we used in that presentation, which was $262,000 per acre, was consistent with their valuation of that two-acre parcel. The second question that was asked was a question with regard to the limitation of the possibility of signage, with regard to the, at least several of these parcels in their pre-development condition. Planning staff reviewed the regulatory environment for that, concluded that in some circumstances that was true, and recommended the new section that you see added, that the city attorney drafted, to provide that prohibition, that all signage, permanent or temporary, on the transfer property shall be prohibited until redevelopment of respective transfer property and approval of a master sign plan was added to the... was added to the section fourteen point two of the agreement. So that agreement that you have before you tonight includes that amendment. So with those two issues, be happy to answer any questions council may have.
I read the report on the appraisal, and it looked sound. And I really appreciate you indulging me on the signage, though. Thank you for that. Appreciate that. I would, if, I would encourage council going forward to perhaps give strong direction to planning staff. There are those on planning commission who believe in, I think, maybe bigger, more signs than some on council might favor. So I would just caution that that is, that is out there. And I mean, you know, stranger things have happened, let's put it that way, since it is said that, as, if I understand the memo correctly, as part of a master sign plan, a developer, or an applicant could ask for a sign, an off-premise sign, correct?
Yeah, I think the, the specific provisions and the, what the planning staff reviewed, that basically, all the signs require consistency with the master plan, except that there is an allowance in the broader zoning code, not the bridge street code, section one fifty-three point one six oh, that would allow signs on these parcels that are being implemented in accordance, I'm sorry. There are provisions under which temporary signs could be permitted, a narrow provision, but since there is no need or desire on the part of the developer to do that here, the sense is that the master sign plan approval gives us then total control with review and approval by the planning commission for any sign that would ever appear on that site, which would only occur now in a post-development condition, because we've also added a limitation that it only happened after redevelopment. So in this case, there could be no off-premises signs in a pre-development condition allowed on these parcels.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else from council? Okay, first voting on ordinance thirty-eight dash seventeen, Anne?
Uh, Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Luck lighter?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Sam Rose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
And ordinance thirty-nine dash seventeen?
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan? Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Sam Rose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
And Mr. Luck lighter?
Yes.
Introduction and first reading ordinance forty dash seventeen?
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documents to acquire zero point two zero three acre more or less temporary easement from James R. Murin, trustee of the James R. Murin irrevocable trust agreement, located at six oh seven three St. Boswell's Court for the public purpose of constructing a shared use path connector and declaring an emergency.
Good evening. The city is preparing to construct a shared, oh, sorry, sorry.
Go ahead.
Evening again.
Thanks.
The city is preparing to construct a shared use path along the east side of Concord Road between an existing pedestrian tunnel, which is located right there to the south, and extending north to St. Boswell's Court, which is essentially located at the northern Dublin incorporation limit. This is a portion of the desired overall path connection that would continue north to Eli Penny Elementary School. This project requires a temporary easement from one property owner, and after negotiating with that property owner, we were able to reach agreement on the appraised value of the easement for the sum of four thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Staff recommends approval of ordinance forty dash seventeen, authorizing the city manager to acquire the temporary easement. And staff also requests council dispense with the public hearing and approve the ordinance as an emergency, which will allow the construction of the path to begin as soon as late July, depending on contractor availability. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Um, just curious, why do we need to do this as an emergency?
It'll save a couple months, because if we didn't do it as an emergency and dispense of the hearing, then we would have the hearing at the July thirty-first meeting, and then we would have a thirty-day period for it become effective. So that would be at the end of August.
So when would?
So essentially, we'll be able to start construction, we hope, in July while council is on recess.
Yeah, and how long, how long will this, is this projected to take from start to finish?
Um, just a few weeks. It's not a very?
So it could be done before school starts? Maybe? Not quite.
Yeah. Potentially. And, and this project is estimated at seventy thousand dollars, so we'll be going out for quotes. We don't have to go through the typical competitive bidding process and then come back to council for a bid acceptance. So it really will depend on contractor availability at this point.
Okay. And I feel like we've had a lot of public comment on this particular path already, right?
Yes.
That it's a very, very desired portion of the path.
Yes.
Um, so what is your feeling about Concord Township's potential reaction to this? Is this something that they might feel?
They're aware of this.
compelled to then take that path further? Because, as we all know, we can't take the path any further, because that's where our border sits. I just would hate to construct a path to nowhere that Concord Township has absolutely no intention of trying to further.
Well, it-
I'm sort of asking for your professional thoughts on that.
Our residents.
Well, and this, this path is not a path to nowhere as it goes to St. Boswell's Court. So there are residents on that street that it'll serve. And the property owner that we were able to negotiate with for this easement, they're anxious to have this path connection in, as it'll give, provide them access to the south.
That's great. No, I, I'm all for it. As you know, I'm all for it. I just wanted, I just kind of wanted to get your thoughts on where the potential future of that might, might be.
Well, and, and we'll continue working with Delaware County and Concord Township. We have a meeting scheduled right after the Fourth of July to meet with them and talk about options for continuing the path north up to the school.
So, but the emergency piece is really centered around, you know, getting this thing going. And even if it's not done before school, it should be done very shortly thereafter, yes?
That's the goal, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
The only other thing I'd like to do is close the loop on, on purpose for the emergency. And, you know, and, and while timing of construction is important, it's also addressing the public safety need. The great part about that is we have a cooperative landowner here. It enables us to finish off that last section for, to, to the street at the northernmost portion of Dublin where it has not been previously addressed. Certainly, you know, there are about, what, four residents there, that that helps, helps. However, it is finishing off to the northernmost street in Dublin, right before our border. It could set a condition for going further north, may or may not happen. We'll continue to revisit that. I know Megan's got more discussion coming up with, in a meeting with Concord Township and the residents who were here at the last meeting, see if we can continue to work that out. But, but certainly, either way, this is not a throwaway path. Even if that were to shift to the other side, this certainly still serves a great purpose to our residents, so just wanted to-
And under the circumstances, I can't see a good reason not to do it.
Right, that's another-
Subject to an emergency.
Yeah.
Megan, so I realize that there's easement already there at the corner of Concord and St. Boswell's. This will go all the way to the street, and there'll be ADA ramp and all of that involved onto Boswell Court, correct?
Yes, it'll connect to the street.
And then how about we have a little bit of easement, it looks like maybe twenty or so feet to the north of Boswell Court. Will there be anything addressed on the north side?
We would wait to build that, once there's a plan to continue.
That's good. My concern was if you come to the end of the path there, and then you have young people, if they're trying to get to school, then they make a decision. And that, they then would come out onto Concord Road, which certainly isn't very pedestrian or bike-friendly, so.
Right. And that's part of the problem, right? Like, that's what they're doing today. And that's why this path is so important.
So you, you feel like we're, for the emergency legislation, you feel like we pick up thirty days?
At least, yes.
Okay. But the trade-off is, is, I think Dana outlined, is public safety of, that's thirty days fewer that those folks are trying to navigate Concord Road?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't see any negative in this at all, because you've got one landowner and an easement, so why not pass it as emergency and get on with it?
My only concern, so, but this doesn't solve, the, the problem that got people here was the northern connection from that, obviously this piece. But what will solve their concerns is the northern piece, which we have no control over.
Continue.
Are we encouraging kids to go up that path and ending up at that sidewalk, looking for the rest of the path, and it's not there?
I think they're doing it anyway, is my point. I think that this is, having this there, at least allows them to get, because the other piece of, when you go up that road, right, there's a dip in that road. And, and when you dip in that road, like, right there, there's no path there. And that's a really dangerous spot to be on the road, because the visibility is not great. So I'd rather provide the path up to that road, and at least provide safe passage that far. You know, knowing that this is part of our encouragement for Concord Township to continue working with us to try to create the rest of it.
And that section of path allows the Boswell Court people total access to the entire bicycle system.
Right, without going on Concord Road.
Yes.
Yes.
The one the city built, and the one Mirfield built, both of them.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Okay. Any other discussion? I will make the motion that we dismiss with the public hearing and treat the legislation as an emergency. Is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Peterson?
No.
Um, Ms. Sam Rose Grooms?
No.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Luck lighter?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Nope.
Enter the ordinance.
Does not pass as an emergency.
Correct.
Correct?
Oh, I'm sorry, it does.
It does.
It does.
Oh, it doesn't.
It has to be a five-two vote, doesn't it, on an emergency?
I mean, all that talk, really, we add the residents in here, I don't get that. You're losing two months of construction time. You're going to go into September, October. I don't understand that.
I don't either.
I don't either. I think it's ridiculous. All right, let's get on with it.
Vote on the ordinance?
We have to vote. Um, Ms. Sam Rose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Luck lighter?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yep.
And Mayor Peterson?
Yes. Ordinance twenty-one dash seventeen?
Res zoning approximately three acres on the east side of Avery Road, approximately seven hundred feet south of the intersection with the Rings Road from R-one Restricted Suburban Residential District to SO Suburban Office and Institutional District.
Thanks, Tim. Logan?
Good evening, members of city council. This is a proposed standard district rezoning for the Ohio Sinus Institute. The site is located on the east side of Avery Road, just south of the intersection with Rings Road. The property is approximately three acres in size and is currently operating as a medical office. The applicant is proposing to rezone the property from R-one Restricted Suburban Residential to SO Suburban Office and Institutional. The current zoning only permits single-family dwellings, while the proposed zoning classification would allow a number of professional and administrative uses, such as general office, medical office, and legal services. The suburban office district also allows a number of conditional uses, such as beauty and barber shops and animal services. Upon approval of this rezoning, the future development proposals for this site would file directly for building permits, and would be, would be subject to our city's zoning requirements. The community plan identifies a future land use designation of standard office and institutional for the east and west sides of Avery Road. This classification is identified for areas adjacent to major collectors, with development intensity being approximately twelve thousand five hundred square feet per acre. The proposed zoning classification permits uses that correspond with this future land use recommendation. The thoroughfare plan also identifies Avery Road as a major arterial with a potential right-of-way of a hundred and twenty-four feet. The city has approved in the five-year CIP the extension of Tuttle Crossing Boulevard to Avery, as well as the widening of Avery Road between Rings Road and Tuttle Crossing Boulevard. And due to the existing development on the east side of Avery, the majority of right-of-way acquisition will occur on the west side of Avery Road, and so no right-of-way dedication would be required with this rezoning. The site is also located in a special area plan, which are conceptual design recommendations for areas of interest throughout the city, with the intent of guiding future development. The southwest area plan encompasses the majority of the agricultural land that is located along the southern and western edges of the city. The plan has a few recommendations that are associated with this site, such as the creation of a neighborhood center to the east, containing a mix of uses, as well as a greenway that would expand along the Tuttle Crossing Boulevard extension further to the west. The proposed rezoning meets the, the intent of this special area plan and the associated recommendations. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this rezoning at their May eighteenth meeting, and staff is recommending approval of this rezoning at the second reading, which is on July thirty-first. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from council? Okay. We hear you at the second hearing, or second reading on July thirty-first.
Thank you.
Resolutions, resolution forty-nine dash seventeen, Anne?
Pointing a member to the architectural review board.
Mike?
We've met, as councils are aware, in the administrative committee. We've resolved that we would make an appointment for, help me out here, members?
This is Jeffrey Leonard.
What's the name?
Jeffrey Leonard.
Jeffrey, yeah, Leonard. And I've talked with him. He's accepted. He's excited about serving. And with the approval of this, we'll have, we'll have our fourth member on the ARB.
Thanks, Mike. Anne?
Uh, Ms. Sam Rose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Luck lighter?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Resolution fifty dash seventeen?
This is a resolution and declaration of friendship and cooperation between the city of Dublin, Ireland, and the city of Dublin, Ohio, USA.
Introduce it.
Yes.
Good evening, members of council. You have before you a resolution to engage in a friendship city agreement with Dublin, Ireland. This agreement also is being considered by the city council of Dublin, Ireland. And if approved, we would recommend holding a signing ceremony during the thirtieth anniversary of the Dublin Irish Festival, when a delegation from Ireland is going to be visiting. Staff recommends approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from council?
Oh, I just wanted to say thanks, Nancy, for all of your hard work on this. This has been something that you have really worked with and babied along. And, and thank you, because it is exciting. And I certainly appreciate all your help, and, you know, keeping our committee updated as well. So thanks.
Anybody else, council?
I just want to say thank you, because it's a major accomplishment to have a capital city of, of a nation, and a proud one at that, marrying up the fairly small city like ours. So it's a major accomplishment. And I think it's a, it's reflective of how they feel about us. So let's hope this all goes through. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Anne?
Uh, Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Luck lighter?
Yes.
Ms. Sam Rose Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
And Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Staff report. Megan?
Good evening. At the February twenty-seventh council meeting, council approved a resolution accepting the bid for the implementation of the first phases of the comprehensive wayfinding system. Council approved the project with the exception of one sign type, and that was the historic Dublin entry sign, as there was some question about the design, as well as the materials comprising that sign. The background on the citywide wayfinding initiative goes back to two thousand and fourteen, and I've included all that background information in your packet, so I'm not going to bother going through that. Kohler Design has been the lead on this effort, and they provided a sign design that's consistent with the sign family that I'm showing up on the screen. That sign family was designed as part of the approved Dublin Comprehensive Wayfinding System. The proposed sign for the historic Dublin entry marker is a fourteen-feet-tall banner-style, two-tone gray metal sign with white lettering that says Historic Dublin. It's supported by black channels on the top and bottom, and is mounted along one edge with a smooth round pole with a decorative base, as well as a decorative finial at the top that will be specific to the historic district. There would be one of these entry signs located at each of the entryways to the district. Council had requested a prototype of this particular sign at that council meeting, and we've placed that prototype out in the island in the parking lot. Hope you had, hope you've had an opportunity to take a look at that, and we're looking forward to hearing any feedback you may have on the design of that sign, as well as the materials.
Thank you for putting the prototype out there. It, it's, it's nice. I, I liked it. I, I had a couple of small concerns. One, you can see on the back of the prototype One, you can see on the back of the prototype already, there's some scratches on it, and so I'm wondering, is snowplows are coming by and throwing up rocks and things like that, how durable? It appeared like it was maybe a silkscreen or a sticker or something that was on the metal panel itself. Rather than being painted, it looked like it was...
It is sheeting.
Okay. I had a little bit of concern about how they'll hold up, because there's already some scratches on the one that is out there. So I don't know if there's anything we can do that would put a protective glaze on it or something that might help that. And my only other thought was, the finial, I really like it. That's a great touch, and I'm wondering if it's too small. I didn't even realize that it was on there until I was starting to walk away from that one there, because it's the same size or diameter as the top of the pole, and so it was, I thought it was a really great touch, and I was only a little bit concerned that it might be lost. But I would appreciate hearing what my fellow members thought.
Anybody else?
Well, I'm up for any changes that will improve the ability to maintain the signs. So if there's another methodology that would yield a better result, we need to do that. And as far as the finial, they can make it a little bigger, make it more, look better, that's fine with me.
John?
No, I like the graphics. I think it's a good-looking sign.
For sure.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I think it looks great. The finial, I mean, I don't, you know, I think it's great, you know, great design, but, you know, how it stays proportionate if it was to get much larger, I mean, you know, I'm not sure I'm the person to ask regarding that, but, you know, if it could become somewhat more prominent, I mean, again, the people that designed this are much smarter than I am in that regard, so.
It looks like you're actually coming into an historic district as opposed to entering a cemetery, so.
I agree. I think it's a great sign. I would love to explore making the finial just a little bit larger. Doesn't seem like anyone else was objecting to that. And then maintenance, of course, would always be a concern, but it's really a very lovely sign.
Okay. We can take a look at the scratches, and then we can share the feedback about the finial with Colar Design and see what they have to say about that.
It looked like on that one, you'd have the ability to change it out. Would there be any, are there any plans of changing it out seasonally for different, it looked like it was, what, three bolts on the bottom and three bolts on the top? It looked like it had 90-degree angle on it coming in.
There are no plans to change it out. It's intended to be static like that, and it is consisting of materials that our sign shop can maintain, so we will be able to change it out as needed.
It is a great look.
If needed. Thank you.
Amy, you always have good taste on these things. What do you think? You sit down there quiet, that's causing me a little concern.
I like the sign. I do. I guess, you know, I had thought of, you know, would we ever want like a wrought iron, like, sort of archway or something like that, but then, you know, to really call attention to the historic district, but then, no. So, absent that, I think this is great and very good.
Okay. You got what you need?
Thank you.
Thank you. Staff comments. Dana?
Yes, just a few, thank you. There are a number of items in your informational packet. A couple I'll point out is the AEP projects. One is a circuit upgrade, the other is tree trimming. So we are working again in partnership with AEP to get that information out to our residents, and as always, we work with them and with our residents on tree trimming and so forth. We'll continue to do that. There's a letter from Crawford-Horing about a proposed field house. Just wanted to let you know that we, as staff, had only received one briefing on that, which was a week ago, just a couple days prior to this getting into packet. Certainly encourage them, since there has been some discussion in and around the community that they've been having about this, to go ahead and put this in the packet and at least create some awareness. Where staff is on this is just, you know, being open to dialogue and discussion about that possibility, and like I said, we've only been briefed on it once, and we don't really even know where that might head in the future, so we'll continue that dialogue with them about that. At your seat this evening, you found a memo from myself initiated by the Finance Department. This is relative to our capital improvement program. What this represents is a staff-level draft to me, as I prepare my capital improvement program recommendations for city council. Same as I did last year, I wanted to send you away on your one-month recess with a little homework, and just recommend that, you know, if you get a chance and you're bored one evening, peruse through this, see what at least is on the mind of staff, is it starting to formulate. I really ask them to focus more on what is the change to the four-year program that's been adopted first, and then what does that fifth year look like? So I think with some of the different color highlights in here, you can see some of what these decreases, increases, some new changes, because, you know, things change, that's why we do this every year. But certainly the most important thing I want to say tonight is give us your thoughts if there are projects that you have interest in, concerns about, maintenance needs, things like that. I certainly want to vet and understand what your concerns may be. I'd like to try to wicker those in upfront as much as I can and feed back to you whether we can meet those, we can't meet those, or if we did, what might we take off, those kinds of things, and do the best I can in saving as much time in the long run as we go through that process by getting your input upfront. So, of course, you know, certainly when you see the whole thing put together, as we get into our discussion of it, you're always welcome to add to that anytime you want, but I thought I'd try to glean any of that I could upfront. So I appreciate if you could take a look at that. Just want to wish everyone, oh, and a Dublin Arts Council memo, too, I wanted to point out, is, I believe is at your seat as well. We did go ahead and pursue the artwork that we talked about at your last meeting, and then there was a donation by the artist, Mr. Fujiwara, on a couple of art pieces, and I just wanted to point that out and publicly acknowledge that and thank him for that and for the work of the Dublin Arts Council on these projects. Last, I just want to wish everyone a happy and safe Fourth of July. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Committee reports. P&amp;Z, Amy?
We had a light, relatively lighted agenda the other night. Just wanted to call everyone's attention. We got a brief rundown of the historic and cultural assessment that's referred in our information-only packet. Looking forward to hearing more about that, maybe seeing maps and getting briefed on that, but that certainly sounded pretty interesting. They did a really in-depth look at all of our history, I think, in response to a couple ARB cases and interest from council and the planning commission and ARB, so looking forward to that. That's all from P&amp;Z. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Administrative Committee, Mike?
Basically, we will be finalizing the review for Dana and Ann. There'll be, I'm sure, a resolution put together for our next meeting, and I'll work together with staff to accomplish that. That's all there.
Thanks, Mike. Community Development, John?
Nothing.
Finance, Mike?
Just that we have the first reading of the CIP on August 14th, and then we'll have a CIP workshop on the 21st, and this is your chance to get things you want done. So it's always one of the most enjoyable things I think we do. I always like the CIP budget process, and thanks for this draft.
Public Services Committee, Amy? Friendship Association, Christina?
Well, I feel like Nancy kind of took the thunder on this one tonight.
Took all the thunder out of it, yeah.
I'm very excited about it.
Morpsey, Tim?
Nothing.
Logan Union Champagne Regional Planning Commission?
Nothing.
It is noteworthy, I think, that Jeff Tyler, I think he's going to Champagne County, is he not?
No, I believe Jeff's going to Fairborn, city of...
Fairborn, oh, okay. Well, congratulations to him.
Brian Thurman.
I think he's drinking champagne as part of his retirement.
Maybe where he went, yeah. US 33 Innovation Quarter, Tim?
Nothing.
Arts Council, John?
Now, again, I just want to reiterate what Dana said. Mr. Fujiwara is really quite the gentleman, and I hope that maybe this wall mural he's done in ceramic tile can hang like downtown in the Newbridge Street corridor, or some public space where maybe we can put some kind of champered roof over to protect it, but it can get out in the public. Then his other, his seated yakie is really an interesting piece, but will require some protection if we're going to put that out in public, but really nice of him to do that.
That it?
That's it.
Board of Education, Chris, Christina?
We are finished with our meetings for the summer, so you can put us on a hiatus until the fall.
Steel. And I don't have anything with the Washington Township Agenda items. Council Roundtable, Chris?
Angel, thank you for the financial report through May 31st. I have a question, and maybe it is something that I missed before, but in the year-to-date revenue report, under the finance miscellaneous and all of those, I believe in this report that all of the numbers are negative. Even the original appropriations are in the negative 63. I don't recall them being in the negative. All of the numbers look like they should, except there's a negative sign in front of them.
Yeah, it's just an accounting funny thing that happens. We actually have to flip a switch to shut the negative off on revenue, and it's not something we just automatically do. We just kind of kick out our reports. We will try to make a note to make sure, rest assured, all of those numbers are positive from a cash flow perspective.
After I picked myself up off the floor from my chair at my desk today...
Thank you for asking.
I thought, you know what, we need to provide a little clarity to that. So, thank you. And I realized that in the next report, that negative switch is flipped off, so the, for the balance of the report, so it was only in the first half of the report that the negative numbers were showing, and the second half of the report, it looked like they were...
That I cannot explain. We will figure that out.
Good. Well, thank you for indulging me in that. A couple of events that happened in the city over the last two weeks. One, a new business opening of Melt Fitness, and that was eye-opening. They do yoga at 110 degrees, but, you know, this is what I've been struck with as I go to these new open houses, is they take an old facility that is quite dated and looks tired, and the interior build-out of them is wonderful, and you could think, you could imagine yourself anywhere at that point in time, and they did a great job of the build-out on the inside of there. It's as trendy and as cool as any place I've seen across the country of an exercise facility, so appreciate that. Also attended the opening pep rally and the opening ceremonies for the Corporate Challenge, and I think the city staff did a great job, and they're partners with the schools in the Chamber, and I think that was a great event for the first shot at it out the gate. I think that it was, it appeared to me to be wildly successful. And then today, I was moved by the Thomas family and the parkland dedication and how many of those folks showed up to celebrate their history of their family and the things that they had accomplished in this community. So I want to thank them again for just being a lovely family and their generosity to the city and donating that parkland that's immediately south of I-270 overpass along Riverside Drive. That's all I have. Thank you.
Christina?
Just a quick shout-out thank you to some of the lead kids. I went to visit them. I donated my piano, so thank you, Michelle, for helping arrange this, and I got a chance to talk with them prior to them painting my piano, and as I left, they were sanding it, and I'm really excited to see it, and it'll be sitting out somewhere. Do you know where yet, Michelle? A super-secret site, and everyone is welcome to come out and play my childhood piano, which will be painted beautifully by these kids, so I'm very, very excited, although I think my mom is maybe a little mad at me, because she'll get over it when she sees the piano, I'm sure. And then Nancy's been working equally as hard for the 30th anniversary of the Dublin Irish Festival on the gathering of the Dublins, and I can't remember how many we had committed, seven, I think. We were working on two more commitments, so that's also really very exciting, and I'm excited to welcome the other stateside Dublins to the Irish Festival as well. So more to come on that as well.
Great, thank you. John, or Mike?
Yeah, just a quick comment that I want to remind council that there are times when emergency legislation is a useful tool, and it's necessary, so you don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. I think tonight was one of them, and we're delaying construction by as much as 60 days or longer on something that's very important to the community up there, and just remember that it is a useful tool at times.
Thanks, Mike. Amy?
I have a written statement that I need to read. Going to announce tonight that I do not intend to seek reelection to Dublin City Council this fall. These past 15 and a half years representing the residents of Dublin in Ward II have been among the greatest privileges of my life. I've been able to be involved in so many amazing things and see projects and development and parkland and planning come to fruition. I've been honored to work with some of the greatest public servants in the country, both council colleagues and Dublin staff members. I've learned lessons, and I've taught lessons, and I've enjoyed most all of my time spent in service to our beautiful community. I've always worked very hard at it, and I've had the ability to attend meetings and take calls and respond promptly to residents and staff. In the past year, the other part of my professional life has changed immensely. I've gone from a part-time position in people transportation to being promoted to lead the entire department for Dublin City Schools. This is work that I enjoy for the challenges and opportunities it provides for me to continue to serve the public, but it also means that I no longer have the quality time to devote to my city council duties. I have a Fitbit, and I use it to remind me to get ready for bed. It beeps at me 45 minutes before I should retire for the night. This year, it has been reminding me at 8:15 that I need to pack it in in 45 minutes, and this is always in the middle of a council meeting or a planning commission meeting that I'm reminded that I need to wake up at 4:00 in the morning. I've always maintained that it is indeed possible to have it all, a wonderful family life, friendships, a fulfilling career, interesting hobbies, and time for volunteer service. Personally, I've been able to have all these things, just not all at the same time. I've been very blessed with choices. When I was a new parent, working full-time, I realized that I had it all, and I joked that at that point I had to give some of it back, and I left the full-time workforce. It's time for me to give this seat back to the citizens of Ward II for them to choose my successor this November. I hope they choose to leave the fear and negativity that have gripped some in the community on the sidelines, and embrace the future, embrace positivity, and embrace the importance of the integrity of our ward's diverse neighborhoods, and embrace change that is an opportunity for refreshment and ever-present in a dynamic, growing, diverse community like Dublin. It is not possible, nor would it be desirable, to go backwards. This sentiment, I'm going to read, is one of my favorite quotes by Henry David Thoreau, and I've kind of lived my life this way. I got this in a graduation card when I graduated from college, and in writing this, I realized that this quote really epitomizes our city. We need to go confidently forward in the direction of our dreams, to endeavor to live our lives as we imagine in our beautiful community, and we will meet with success in unexpected uncommon hours. Dublin will always be a very special place, and I'm so thankful I've had the opportunity to serve this community. I think this is what we all wish, when we boil it down and think about our lives, is simply to make a difference. As a young parent, new with my family to the city of Dublin, I realize that this place is indeed very special because one person truly can make a difference. I've told people who ask me, why in the world would I ever want this job? It is a chance to make a difference. It's a real chance to make a difference. I've had this opportunity, and for that, I will be forever grateful. Thank you.
I don't know whether to clap or not, because...
I don't know.
At the end of the day, we're going to be sad to see you go, but if we clap, it would appear that we're happier going. So, in a no-win situation.
Well, and I'm sure we'll have plenty of opportunities in the next, I guess, six months to express our thoughts, especially as we approach the end of the year, but I will just suffice it to say, there has been no one that I have ever met that has been more dedicated or more committed to what is in the best interest of this community.